I call the Maplewood City Council Work Session to order on Tuesday, February twenty seven, two thousand twenty four. Ms. Withacom, roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Homa?
Good.
Mayor Knapper?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Maddox?
Yeah.
Councilmember Correll?
Here.
Madam Mayor, forums present?
Thank you. May I have a motion to excuse Deputy Mayor Fawkingham?
Sure. Second one?
Any discussion hearing then, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Ms. Withacom, item number four?
Item number four, Strategic Budget Priorities Presentation. Mayor and council, it is my honor to open the discussion tonight with our strategic budget priorities presentation. This is an opportunity for staff to share with you what we've identified as our priorities going into our budget planning period. And also an opportunity for you to be in conversation with us about those items. To ask questions whether about the budget, about the priorities that we've identified. And also for you to identify the priorities that you would like us to focus on as we go into our budgeting process. I think, as you know from the schedule we presented at the last meeting, we will be looking at the budget itself. In early May, in three consecutive nights where we're clustering departments together to review. What we finally come up with as a staff for your review and recommendation. But in advance of that, we'd like to get a sense of where you'd like us to head and also give you a sense of where we think we should be going. So with that, I will go ahead and get started. Please, at any point, interrupt me to ask questions. We have staff here overseeing our larger budgetary areas to answer questions. And also to speak about their priorities if needed. Going to get started. The purpose of this budget priorities exercise is multiple. Really, this gives us an opportunity to ensure that the budgeting priorities we set ladder up to our strategic plan. While we are not going to be able to fund everything that we're prioritizing for you here tonight. This exercise also gives us an opportunity to look ahead. If we can't get into the budget for the next fiscal year, where can we look into getting into the budget? And in that way, it helps us understand organizational capacity, not only to budget for these items, but also to fulfill them. To give you a reminder of our strategic plan and focus areas, reiterating them here. When you do get the final budget presented to you, we will identify which of the strategic plan and focus areas each of the major budget requests ladder up to. But I will just, for the purposes of our community, fiscal sustainability, safe, healthy and sustainable community, innovative and high performing organization. Infrastructure and economic growth are the focus areas that you all identified in the strategic plan development in two thousand twenty three. Before we jump into those priorities, I wanted to give us again a snapshot of where we have been recently and what we have budgeted for this year. I will note that this is an extension of the presentation we provided at the town hall. And let you know that we didn't have the final audited budget figures from the last fiscal year in that presentation. So if you notice the difference between the town hall budget presentation and this one, it's that we do now have the final audit of the figures for the last fiscal year. And just as a reminder to our community, we like to put the pie in front of you. To remind us that sales taxes make up almost half of our revenue. I've included here the other sources. I will note for your, as a reminder, the italicized funds. These are all special use funds, so revenue comes in and revenue goes out for those special restricted purposes. And they're not funds, as you know, that we spend on anything outside of those restricted purposes. Our expenses have remained pretty steady in terms of allocation over the past several years. And I will note, we made the change in our budget to move fire and police. Out of general funds in terms of the way that we're looking at it and assign those to prop E and to our fire sales tax. So the numbers presented here, the indication, we're showing those expenses on the next page. However, the chart does indicate the total allocation of expense for those areas. We have prop E and the fire sales tax appearing in the other budget category. I wanted us also to take a look at our year-end fund balance so we can get familiar with where we've been tracking recently. We made some modest gains in the last fiscal year. Obviously, we want to continue to keep this stable, if not growing. We have been challenged with expenses increasing. The cost of doing business increases steadily. We do not have a commensurate increase in our revenue. So we do always want to be sure in our budgeting period to ensure we're preserving this this fund balance to the greatest degree possible. We also wanted to begin to introduce some revenue impacts that we expect for the upcoming fiscal year. I know these won't be unfamiliar to all of you. One thing I don't think that we discussed yet at the table is a predicted increase in our solid waste services costs. So we've been under contract with the public services. That contract will be going, will be ending in this fiscal year, this coming fiscal year. We had a very advantageous contract at our last negotiation time. Their cost has risen considerably since we negotiated our last contract. So we will need to be considering how we're going to approach supporting those services going forward. So that's something that we're going to be keeping an eye on as we make a proposal to in the budget. Something else we want to keep an eye on is the implementation of the property tax freeze for seniors, which went into effect at the beginning of this calendar year. We don't yet have data from the county to understand how that's going to impact us in terms of our proportion of residents who are eligible for this. But we do need to keep it in front of us as we move forward. You all as a council have been very busy on the legislative side, looking at ways that we can loosen some of our ordinances, deregulate where it makes sense. Encourage housing affordability in seminaries. While the fees that have been removed as part of that process are not significant, it's something we still want to be aware of and keep in front of us. Also, we can add our expected revenue that'll come in there. Some opportunities, obviously, for revenue generation would be the successful passage of progress. Our streets, bond issue, we'll be looking at some of the projects that we anticipate getting funding, should that proposition be successful. Also, you all approved a contract with Grant Match fairly recently. We've just started the process of identifying projects that might be eligible for them to produce grant proposals for. So we'll be moving forward on that fairly aggressively in this coming year in order to capture as much revenue as we possibly can through there. There are a few items that were planned for this fiscal year that were not initiated. Either as a result of staff turnover, budget restrictions, transitions, something that's just a good start. So we're looking at carrying over into the next fiscal year. I will note that the code optimization that we budgeted for last year, we're going to be making a different recommendation for that. For the coming fiscal year, some of these smaller items like the Community Growth Fund, Open House, obviously didn't happen as a result of the growth fund not being finalized. So once that gets finalized, we'll be looking at that again. As well as the D I B training for all staff that is obviously dependent upon us forming a plan for the divided implementation of that plan. Since you've just all approved and adopted that in December, that's going to be a process when we structure this spring so that we can be looking at the next five years of budget. And allocating those planning expenses. So with that, I want to share the priorities that we've identified at a departmental level and also call forward areas that we've determined that we can increase in our collaboration across departments. Here in the executive and legislative category, I've included one plan, a priority that you all have surfaced with me, but I would love to open discussion for others. For my own area, obviously, D I B plan and implementations of priority within this year. We have talked at great length about the city's lack of human resources. Professionalized human resources support. Let's just put it that way. We don't have an HR professional. Anytime we need HR support, we're reaching out for it with the council. We have a staff that's substantially sized to warrant having professionalized HR support or just below average employees. We need that in order to be a strong employer, in order to be an employer that folks want to stay with and want to grow with. And we need that in order to begin to put performance metrics to some of our departments, be evaluated on a consistent basis, really be. An employer of choice because we're protecting our employees' professional practices. We have opened some conversations to evaluate opportunities for shared services. I am very keen to identify opportunities for us to implement an HR management system. I think as you know, we're doing a lot of those processes on paper when we're onboarding, when we're putting timesheets, when we're looking at payroll. All of this is happening outside of a system and we entered into a system. So obviously, the margins for error can be significant and it's very tiny to work with. Other areas I want to look into prioritizing IT services. We know we have some gaps to fill in terms of software adoption, software integration, and really professionalizing our staff's experience using software. We had to migrate to three sixty-five kind of suddenly and we're sort of lacking in training and in sales and in structure to be able to adopt that as fully as we need to. We also know that computers need repairs, computers need to be replaced. We currently lack a replacement plan and we currently do not budget for replacement of equipment, not in a meaningful way that can really help us look at the useful life of all of our equipment. So I would like us to develop a replacement plan and look towards becoming more efficient with our resources in terms of deployment of technology, particularly for computers. We all have old towers that have been upgraded, I think, to the end of their useful life. It would be fantastic if we could all have laptops and document stations like a twenty percent replace should have to allow some mobility for staff and also lower the cost on equipment needs. We all need to upgrade audio, visual experience here in council chambers. That's been something we've been needing to do. We know the experience viewing from home is not ideal. We know it will cost a lot to retrofit this chamber to be better experienced, so if we do, we're going to lose a ton. But we think the time has passed due in terms of the audio quality, the video quality, and technology has actually improved significantly just since two thousand twenty to be able to support that. So that's something we need to look at. In your area, child care availability for council board and community meetings is something we have identified too. I'd love to hear more on that.
So I've, I started that conversation with council members because we have parents that are serving on council. We have parents that are serving on boards and commissions and especially our boards and commissions when they need to take time out of their day to come to a meeting. It would be nice if they could have some type of assistance with childcare. I would not like to see childcare be the reason why we don't have community members that are volunteering to serve. And then really, just, just personally, my children are in the next room right now. Excuse me, because I do not have childcare for them. I'm not going to leave them. So I, and I just want to let council know, well, I'm asking for your grace. I did tell my children that if something was going on and, I mean, it was an emergency to come out and weigh me down. So I will lead the dais for my kids. Okay, thank you. So I figured it was going to be fine with council, but I just wanted to let you know. And this is really the first time that I've had to do this and, but it's just, it's really good timing to show you that it's, it's necessary. I think that we should be mindful about families and, and people that want to serve and have children. And if there's a way that we can offset, help them with childcare, just for maybe, I don't know, I don't know. This conversation be had, but I just think it's important. So I appreciate having that conversation with you and you taking that and making it part of this presentation. Thank you.
I would invite discussion on other legislative priorities. And again, we'll have more opportunities for this conversation as we go through the process, but you all have a budget too.
Okay, well, while we've got the slide up. Have we looked at at all our IT security situation? And it's just top of mind because I'm dealing with it at work and we're being told our infrastructure's not nearly what as good as we thought it was and that it's a whole new day. Is that something the city is paying attention to and on?
We are paying attention to it because we know the risk and we know the cost. We know the cost if we don't do it. I don't know that we are in a position to be paying attention to it to the degree that we probably should be. We're just moving into cloud-based software and storage. We do not have two-factor authentication. Maybe I should be saying some public meetings.
There. We'll just let, we'll just let it rest that we need improvement. I'll take that.
We know there are opportunities for us to improve there and looking at it. With our IT services contract of this year, we have an opportunity to define what our goals are in that rebidding process and that's something we want to work very closely on.
Forgive me, Councilmember Homa, because I've had the conversation with, with you. I think you're the, the last council member that I converse with about childcare. Yeah, I think, I think, can you just give us some thoughts on this?
Yeah, I've also talked with, with the city manager about this. I think it's, it's something that we need to explore. Just for current members of council and board executive missions, but we have many young families who've moved to Maplewood. And my lawyer has talked to me about one sort of in certain capacities, but not having that ability because of the worry about childcare. So I think support recruitment of people to become citywide engaged and involved, this is something that we need to offer, something. I'm not sure what it looks like, but yeah, I'm definitely supportive of that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would agree. I, I think that any opportunity we have to, you know, allow more people accessibility to serve. I, I think we should be utilizing those as best we can. And if that's looking into childcare, I, I think that that's, we, we have a great example right now where, you know, it's, 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 it's here. So it's, I think, taking a look at it, it should be a priority.
Other items before?
I know that you and staff will need to dig in a bit more to Grant Match. Based on the conversation that I'll talk more about in, in our next meeting, the conversation that we had with the city manager Webster Groves. Seems like we're going to need to set aside some money for that work from Grant Match. And so I am just wondering, do you and staff already have a priority list for Grant Match? And if not, when do you think you would have like a priority list ready so then you can tie that into the budget?
Yeah, I think this serves as our preliminary priority list because there are several items we'll be identifying here tonight. That would be a good case for Grant Match. Anthony has started to develop something. I think we can be in a position to refine that over the budget period. But yeah, this is, there are a number of projects that we're presenting tonight that would be eligible and be a great fit for what we understand the available grants are for.
And, and forgive me, y'all. So what we learned from city manager Peoples yesterday was with Grant Match, it's a great organization. But the way that they are paid is you do need to set some money aside in your budget for whatever grant they're going for. You're going to set aside a percentage of the amount of the grant that they're going to apply for you. Excuse me. And so that was actually the first time I heard that because when I talked to another mayor, it was a different payment setup. So, like I said. City manager Withacom has just signed the contract not too long ago. Her and Mr. Traxler are working through that, so we'll get more details, but just want to be mindful because I know we have a lot of things that are on our list of to-dos and like the park. That was the main reason why I brought this to y'all, or Grant Match to y'all, because of the parks and how much money they need. I think they told me like seven to ten million, yeah, for all of our parks. So I think that it'll work out, but I'm also just mindful of how we have to budget that. So thank you both.
We'll be looking at that.
On the same topic, and, and I'm not as well-versed in this as, as I probably should be at this point. Have we looked at all or maybe could we look at all at seeing, maybe hiring a part-time grant writer or something like that? I don't know if that's the type of thing where, I don't know that realm too well as far as, you know, obviously, they're going to be experienced in writing grants and making, you know, bringing money in, right? So it's essentially paying for itself or paying for that job. I don't know what type of impact that would have on the budget or how that would look, but it's something to kind of look at, maybe.
If we're utilizing Grant Match correctly, we shouldn't need that. We know there will be some startup need that will be fairly intensive on the part of our staff. So speaking as a former grant writer, you have to have your portfolio in order, right? All of your audited financials, your mission statement, your case for support, all of that needs to be developed by us. We load that into the system, they respond to it. We identify with them specific projects. It's their responsibility to find the match and to do the grant writing itself. Now, that, that portfolio is something that we developed and we need to vet what it is that they produce, so we're approving that, reviewing. But essentially, they don't get paid if they don't get the grants, so they have an incentive to identify as many opportunities as possible. I think if we were to consider something beyond that, I'd want us to go through this process with Grant Match for these two years. I mean, thinking through what a typical grant cycle might look like, you may not get a grant in the first year, maybe awarded in the second year, you may have spent it in the third year. I think for us, we will be able to assess the new pocket of grant match we're going to need with it.
Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember, I was with you initially. I was like, I think I want to just hire somebody. But when, when I received more information about Grant Match, I was just like, okay, we can wait a bit. Because essentially, whatever we would set aside in the budget to pay Grant Match, that's what would be going to a grant writer. So the, the good thing is if they didn't get the grant, then we don't pay them something to keep that. So I'm like, okay, that's a bright spot that we can look at. But, you know, I, I just want to say how loud I was with you.
Also, we have to have all those ducks in a row for the portfolio and the mission statement, financials, everything else. So even if we get a part-time person, would they be having efficacy until we had all that done?
I'm sorry, I just received notification that viewers at home cannot see the PowerPoint, so we're going to figure out how to do that while we proceed and I apologize to those at home who can't see it. We will be posting the slides on the city's page afterwards. I assume this is user error on my part?
Well, but you, we had a whole conversation about IT, so there you go. Another living example in a moment.
Let me go ahead and move on to finance. We don't have very many significant budget requests in this area. Something we do want to look at is budgeting software. We have finance software. We don't have budgeting software. I think it would help us in accelerating our process on an annual basis. It is not inexpensive. It is also not overly expensive. However, I have asked for opportunities for us to look at better software integration. We have a lot of systems that currently don't speak with one another right now. So whatever we would look at, we really need to be reassured that it could integrate with our Tyler system. We're looking at opportunities now that we got the smart go to see where we can integrate there. We really do need a finance system to be talking to other systems. So that's something I'm digging into and we'll be looking at pretty closely and natural with our opportunities either. We also have discussed the opportunity for third-party payroll processing, although not nearly as critical in the real estate budgeting software. In our social services area, our social services coordinator has identified an area of community focus that she would like to undertake in the budget planning. This is the Manchester area, which as you know, we experienced two businesses over the two years. We know there's a lot of work we can be doing as a city to bring community participation, community engagement, to bring services to the area. And so I've asked her to collaborate with our park consortium as well as the school district to be thinking through what kind of proposals she'd like to bring forward from a budgetary standpoint in terms of program. Not just providing her services, but what programs can the city be developing in that area to be building community and building place. There are some opportunities that I think we'll be able to bring forward in the near term around some of the businesses in that area that I think show promise in terms of bringing, put traffic to the area. Creating more connectivity with our special business district. But until we get to that point, I'm not going to share anymore, but just to say that this is an area of focus. Also, we're looking at ways that her work can be collaborative with the community development work that we're doing in it. Down in that area, I don't know if you're aware, the seventy-one hundred block of Manchester right now. Laura Hill, our community development director, is working with the M R I school district on some beautification projects where the seat-to-table and sustainability classes are doing plantings. Streetcape improvements, they've asked us to look at opportunities to maybe put a mural in that area at some point. So, you know, we have legislative work to do there. That will take a bit of time, but we do want students to know that listening and we want to be responsible for that. And this is a block where we'd like to begin to do some of that beautification. In community development itself, obviously, again, here, placemaking is seventy-one hundred block. We're also implementing brochures highlighting our special business district and kiosks along Manchester houses. We're also going to be securing a special business district intern to help with some of this work, particularly marketing and engagement. So that we can promote our business community, spread the word, get more people coming for events, and really have higher activities in those areas.
I just, before we move on, I just want to express my sincere gratitude for the attention that is being given to the seventy-one hundred block of Manchester. I have been talking about that since two thousand twenty-one. It is needed. I am grateful. Thank you.
And as a resident, you know I'm ecstatic. I am beyond ecstatic. It's about time that that area got a little attention.
You're here.
Good attention.
You're here.
We're excited to bring folks to the table, including our war-two council members to help us work through some of those opportunities.
Well, good news. We didn't do anything wrong. We only have the capacity to show the council chambers in a static view. We don't have the ability to. Love the presentation online, just so you know, but perhaps with the new.
With our new AV setup, we will be able to do that. Okay, thank you for checking on that. And thank you to the public for letting us know. And our public works in building departments. Anthony is here to ask questions, but I'll let you know that these are things that we also surface at the town hall. Priority item obviously is a new comprehensive plan. We haven't had one in probably over thirty years. We have a lot of needs in terms of not only defining how our land will be used, but also using the comprehensive plan as a tool to signal the city's development and redevelopment priorities. We need to be aggressive and we need to be proactive on economic development. We can't sit back and wait for that to happen. We need to be really proactive about it. The comprehensive plan process will include a robust community and business engagement process. We also see opportunities to identify how we can increase our economic development capacity within staff and our ability to really be meaningful in our work in that space. So we really want to work with a vendor who can help build capacity in terms of doing that work as well. With the successful passage of progress, we will be able to accelerate our implementation of the recommendations made in our capital funding study. Should progress be unsuccessful, we will still move forward with these projects just at a much slower rate and far fewer of them annually. As we've shared with the public in our information and literature about progress, we have about one point five million dollars a year in our capital improvement budget to devote to street sidewalk improvements. That doesn't go very far into the landscape. Given the cost of construction, cost of raw materials. So we really, we really will be relying on this successful passage to accelerate those projects that have been identified by community and revenue management staff. The same can be said for the ADA study, which we did budget for this year, but did not move forward as a result of some constraints. So we'll be budgeting that for next year, included in the progress proposal. Um so we'll be budgeting that next year, um included in the progress proposal, um our some ADA ADA projects, including ADA accessibility to City Hall. As we discussed before, and you approved uh your last meeting, the greenway extension, greenway extension. Um we'll be budgeting items starting in twenty twenty-five. And we do have some ongoing needs in our slow progress to make gradual upgrades to our physical facility here of City Hall. Mrs. Traxler's here. Do you have a question about this priority?
So I wanna talk about the police department. Is that on the, okay, I'll wait.
Okay. Okay, we'll get to parks because that's also part of uh our public works team. Uh so our continued implementation of the Parks Master Plan, as you mentioned, Mayor, several million dollars worth of proposed projects. We need to secure resources for those before we can um move forward at the rate that we really would like to. Um so we'll be identifying what our priority is for next fiscal year, but also writing, um looking for opportunities to have Grant Match, write grants for some of the other parks. We have had um some success in collaboration between our Sustainability Commission and our Parks Department. Our shredding and recycling event, the Saturday is an example of that, of looking for ways that we can build capacity by collaborating with our commissions to meet some of our parks and sustainability. Let's talk about police.
Please, go ahead. I'll wait.
As you know, equipment is a persistent and necessary need. So you will be seeing some budget proposals coming forward for upgrades and replacement on police equipment. That's always something we need to look through. Um we would have some needs, we think, around camera integration between our body cameras and our car cameras, which are not talking to each other and our car cameras are pretty old. So we need them to be on the same system. We need to have the capability to review our footage and make it doesn't take hours. Seems like we're having a lot of difficulty. There are a lot of vendors who rushed to market in twenty twenty. They need this equipment available to the police departments and we're grateful for that. Um but we need to stay evolving in terms of um the usage of that equipment and how it's integrated. We um need to make some technology upgrades to our public safety camera system, again. The cameras in our police department, in our fire department, in our pool area, in City Hall, these aren't all talking together. They're not all on the same system. Um as well as some of our cameras out in the community, so we're willing to make sure um that the resources we have deployed can be effectively used. And then we have the facility plan.
Okay, so please correct me if I'm wrong. It is my understanding that the police department, the facility for the police department has been like being worked on for like seven years, a long time. Um so Anthony, do you know anything about that? Cause I don't, I don't wanna keep going if that is not correct. Like, how long have have we as like City Hall been working on that space for the police officers?
We moved um the admin, we were in the what used to be the library right now approximately nine years ago. And since then, we've been making slow, steady progress. Most recently, we completed the locker room. Um probably nine months to a year ago. Uh the kitchen will be completed and then we get the stairwell. Uh approximately that same time, we're basically connected the um the upper and the lower levels. We use the old um police data room. Uh and we turned that into a detective bureau roughly around that same time. So we had three major changes within within probably the last, I'd say, year, maybe even eighteen months where we did a stairwell. A detective bureau, getting utilizing the fire department's old space. And then um right now, we have the kitchen essentially uh roughed out. Uh we've got all the appliances ordered and the cabinets ordered. We'll have the kitchen complete uh within about the next three to four weeks. We're doing all this this work in-house, which we do it for about forty cents on the dollar. So at this point, uh in about in about approximately a month now, a lot will be essentially done. We still need to go back later though and replace the floor that was installed ninety years ago. It's in terrible shape. We're also gonna add an additional office for two in the basement where they remove the old jail cells. And create some additional office space right now. Right now, the officers have to eat. And and essentially, the same room they have roll calls, the table that they eat, and the same rooms that they may not have the process information. So it's it's basically one big all-purpose room. And so we're gonna try to get more space right now. Uh and then Chief Nider can uh speak to you about potential processing center, which um may be something that we've had, you know, we're investigating rather than for Chief Nider about that.
Chief, I know, I'm sorry. You look so comfortable. So really, Chief, like, my first question is, is this what's being built out for you all in this building? Is that enough space for y'all?
No, it's it's a real, we have thirty-three officers. Um it's a lot of challenges right now. Uh currently, we have two okay, we're taking into a tussie for an offense at another facility, Richmond Heights uh jail facility, so that's kind of a personal time. It's not safe down here, bringing anybody that we need to bring in. If there's an offense, there's just not enough space. All the officers, as Anthony mentioned, there's a multipurpose room. That is where they eat their meals, call their reports. There's just no place for concentration. Uh we're gonna utilize the fire department right now for our community resource officer units. So we we're taking off this space over there from them. We have another uh, we have the training frame maker and the final space for uh him right now. So there's just not enough space for thirty-three personnel in that basement uh as it is. So we have done some, we can put our administrative offices up here. Uh we use the criminal investigations division, the local department. It's all separated and it's it's challenging for us. It really is. And being on the major case squad and visiting police facilities all over St. Louis County, I can look at everybody and I say maybe it is probably one of the most challenging agencies there is, you know, as far as being sufficient for our services.
Thank you all for continuing to do the great work that you do um in a space that is not really conducive or welcome to to the great work that y'all do. So so thank you all. Um if you could wave a wand, yeah, I know, that's why I started it like that, right? Um if you could wave a wand, what would you like to see for the department?
I mean, it is costly. It is costly. I mean, ideally, a standalone building would be great. But uh you know, the officers are patient, they're understanding, they know it's physically challenging. Um so they're not discouraged by it. They they like to see sort of progress. Uh but we will have to bring someone out here to see if we can expand outwards or to the west, you know. Uh we're gonna have, you know, you should really have a safe space to bring somebody in or go out in shots and bring them in right in the facility. If our uh clear accreditation players came out here and so if we have many people in here to process, I'm sure they would uh not give us a very good notes on that as far as safety and spacing for that.
Those are all of my questions. Thank you.
Do we, do you feel like we can at least address some of the concerns with the current space we have? I know you said, you know, there there isn't enough space overall, but could we at least hit some of it?
Yes, what we have to be careful of is just putting on Band-Aids, you know, for lack of a better term. Uh we really do need a, if we can use a space, we have to bring an expert out here and that costs an architect and uh contractor to see if we can either build out or to the rest a little bit towards the fire department. I I think it could be feasible, but again, I'm not an expert in that area, so.
Did we pay Richmond Heights for the privilege of bringing our people there?
Yes, we're charged. Uh it's a it's a middle cost. It's how many people you process there. Um and they'll base it on blanket use of food use if we uh if uh someone served lunch, so. But it it's very normal time that they are held at Richmond Heights.
Um if we process something at a whole facility issues that we are experiencing at Richmond Heights and the ability not to build from a joint coalition. Um I noticed in our memo of the sixteen, that probably is listed the only one that doesn't have our own process and whole facility. Is that something that we need or are there other potential solutions that you guys are talking about? Since Richmond Heights is our neighbor and we use them, but that's becoming more and more limited. It doesn't seem sustainable to be somebody to build the cost of St. Louis County is um giving us that housing, you know, that cost is continuing to increase. So are we looking at like, I'm available, we're gonna have to do it to some point, or are there other potential solutions other than our own facility?
I'll take that in two parts, council member. We do need a processing area. That's ideal. I mean, it 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 costs, I mean, it takes time, personnel to transfer to another jurisdiction, use our facility, wait for an officer from that jurisdiction because they have protocols to meet our officer there. So that takes that individual jurisdiction's time off the street and our officer's time. Uh my office is number one, probably what they said, would be a place to process an individual. And mind you, we also have uh people coming here to uh uh address the fines or what have you. But do you need the processor organization, the worst thing to do, have to bring a police car to another facility? You know, not all too away, so just kind of processing it here, making the process more smooth and and uh a better transition. Uh as far as holding, that's a whole other challenge. There's challenges come with that. You have to have round-the-clock monitoring, including a physical check of the individual every hour. So that's a conversation the city manager and us all in the future would need to have. But processing wise, just a processing facility downstairs would be ideal.
One last thought left. Do we have, or do we capture the um we need to, we're spending for conveyance and transport and how much time that's taking away from officers being able to be on the street? Do you have data on that?
We do, as it relates to our research on the data from um uh thanks for your St. Louis County. So it's kind of incorporated in that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. So with that, we've identified a priority in our budget process to begin to understand where our plan needs to be. Because this will not be a quick solution and this will be a resource-intensive solution, right? Um and to to the question of, you know, whether or not Band-Aid, obviously, are processes related with that. Do we not spend those monies now so that we can save them for later? That's what we're gonna be looking at for this one. And finally, um in our fire area, as we all approved at your last meeting, we have joined the intergovernmental agreement for the Central Core Fire Training Commission, which puts us in a position now to support collaboratively with the construction of a shared training facility. Uh I saw the numbers uh at your last meeting about what we're going to be budgeting for. We still don't have an outcome on the grant request that Clayton made. Um so obviously, what we budget will be continued on that. We have also opened discussions internally about what it would look like to fully staff all three of our fire crews. Right now, we're using a floater situation in order to be able to fully staff every time they deploy. Ideally, we can have two more firefighters on staff in order to be fully staffed. We're doing fine with what we have. We have a really highly-trained professional staff who makes it work. That being said, um we would like to have as many staff in place as possible in order to facilitate. Um and then we need to make sure that we're planning ahead for the acquisition of our new rescue truck that will be in the next fiscal year, if any following. But as we discussed at our last meeting, we're going to be doing fire projections. Um so we're gonna be seeing a bump there slightly, though obviously that expense is started over many years, so it's not all going to be the same.
So you said we were too short of being fully staffed? Or or to the point where you'd like it to be?
Six personnel assigned each crew of one floater. Minimum staffing is five personnel. So in other words, just throw on a player often, which earn, I'm already at minimum staffing. We have to work, it's called a federal cycle where one crew is on federal every month. So in order to not accrue overtime, we allow that personnel to take off. So that's minimum seven people now because the floaters are, they have to be off. Now you bounce back to somebody on PTO and you're on federal, that's seven days of overtime a month. I do believe taking the crews of three crews of seven by adding two additional personnel would help offset that overtime cost, but also ensure the minimum staffing of five. We don't have the depth to to meet that need.
We're costing money and wearing people out. We're not putting anybody in danger yet, or at the moment.
No danger yet, correct.
I think that was a second point. I don't wanna, I just
If I can just, I'm not stepping out of bounds. I've been here for a long time and both departments have grown, but when I started, there was only two police officers. What I'm trying to share is as the police department's grown, they do an incredible job. It definitely outgrown the space that they inhabit currently. We moved into the fire station, the reason we're running, we have three individuals. That's really the doctor, Dr. Boy, which is still up of four. So I just echo, I think I, I was a wrong city while working, but there was definitely a need to, and and I do echo what the city manager says that hopefully not finding a band-aid, this breaks it maybe temporarily, but there's gonna need to be some sort of long-term. If my opinion counts for anything.
Oh, that's great. Thanks. That's helpful. Yep.
Oh, just thank you, Chief, for, you know, being welcoming to the police department in in your space, sharing that space. Thank you.
We work incredibly well with the police department and media outreach. Week three was fantastic. And it's worked well with planning all of our community relations, working with your officers, you know, after Sir Hoskins. And everybody assigned since first he got promoted, the sergeant went back to the streets.
Thank you.
That was my presentation. I'll take more questions if you have them.
Thank you. I appreciate um the slides. They are easy to follow and understand. Appreciate the graphs. Yeah, thank you very much. All right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. When opposed, the motion carries. We are adjourned.